June twenty-two, regular session.
It's called this regular meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Go call Mr. Grandia.
Keisha Johnner?
Here.
Mark Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
Here.
I would entertain a motion on this morning's agenda.
Motion to approve today's agenda.
Second?
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Jake, any communications received by your office?
You guys did receive one letter from Barbara Van Wyk, Mayor of Melcher Dallas regarding local option sales tax. So we just wanted for the record that that letter was received.
Very good.
And it should be in your package.
Very good, thank you. And we'll work out a timing on that Jake for when we need to discuss that.
Yep, we'll have a later, there'll be some discussion later in the meeting as well.
Yeah, very good, thank you. Any other communications? I have nothing. All right, hearing none, we'll move on. Public comments, this is the portion of our meeting the public can speak on items not on this morning's agenda. The board cannot act on those items, but they could be topics for future board meetings. Are there public comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda? We've always got to make sure we coordinate between our... Nothing in the room. Renee, see anything online? All right, very good, we'll move on. I would entertain a motion on this morning's consent agenda.
Motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second?
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
All right, very good. On to business, first item is Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-seven. It's approving a paying agent which is the new bank of Western Illinois. Michaela, I assume that's yours? Or is that somebody else?
Well, it's kind of come through, sorry. It's kind of a combination effort as we continue on the processes. I don't know if Michael Maloney's on today or not.
Yes.
I am.
Hey, Michael. So, these two resolutions were prepared by Allers and Cooney. Stephen Nadel continuing the process of the county, the board selling the bonds for the VA demolition project. So, this is... Michael, is this the last resolution before the sale of the bonds?
Yep, this is the last action by the board here. And then closing will happen without a board meeting on July eighth. So, this approves the signing of all the other documents. So it'll be a nice stack of paperwork there for you today. Two resolutions, just how Allers does it, but this is the same process that we did on the Pella Prairie Ridge financing lead last calendar year. So same format, same approach, same output here, just for your contact.
Very good, very good, Michael. Thank you for the explanation. I just want to make sure from a reporting standpoint, so this will all go through Michaela's office then?
Correct, yes. And we do have all of the correct funds set up, the bank account set up. Everything's prepared to be received.
Okay, very good, very good.
We're ready for that process to begin, definitely.
Okay, very good, thank you, Michaela. Very good. Board, any questions for Michael or Michaela or Jake? They seem to be the triumphant on these three, so.
Appreciate it.
Very good, thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-seven.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-seven.
Second?
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Very good. Second, Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-five is the form of a loan agreement and providing for the issuance of the eleven million dollars of taxable G O.
Fifty-nine or fifty-nine?
Oh, fifty-nine, sorry. Just, just now. That's fifty-nine. All right, very good. Any discussion on that, Michael?
No, this is same idea. The other item was just approving the paying agent, which is the intermediary between the county and the bondholders to process payments. This is really a general resolution that approves the board's signatures and the county's just moving forward with all the certain legal documents that need to be approved for closing. So, this is a little bit lighter because this is taxable rather than tax exempt.
Right.
Like Series twenty, but it just governs the ability to execute all those and get this closed on July eighth. So, really the master resolution for everything to wrap things up for you.
Okay, appreciate it, Michael. And again, from a record-keeping and accounting standpoint, Michaela, we've got the distinctions between taxable, non-taxable. We're set on our accounts.
We are ready to launch, yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. Board, any questions, discussion?
No, we're finally getting to the point where I see something happen, I hope.
I see something happen, absolutely. That's fantastic. With that, I would entertain a motion on twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-nine. Fifty-nine.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-nine.
Second?
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
All right, very good, thank you. And Michaela, thank you to you and your staff. I mean, that's a lot of extra work, so.
That's okay. We're happy to do it. We're anxious for this project and.
Yeah, very good, thank you. Next, we have a discussion action item. We have some equipment salvage questions. We have EMSCO and DEET. I know that, Chris, you've got some information on this? Is it anything you want to add to this before we launch into our discussions, Board?
Well, I think the important thing is, is this is equipment that we originally wanted to try to salvage for county use. So this was not part of the salvage agreement in the overall demo contract. So that's why these additional things are here. You know, after offering it up to other county entities, no one else really wants any of this equipment and it really can't be used. It's a decent way for us to net some income off it, move towards the project. So that's probably all I have on it.
So, the list I have here, Chris, we've got chiller pumps, wire, electrical equipment, miscellaneous equipment from the boiler and chiller buildings. We're looking at fifty thousand.
Yep, from EMSCO. That'd be just the boiler plant.
Okay, okay.
Well, it'd be a good way to get it cleaned out, too.
Absolutely. It helps market the building since we are saving the buildings having that stuff actually taken out. And at no cost to us.
Yeah, excellent.
And then the Vite, so that would be for the other six remaining generators, the three-phase generators that are on-site.
Same group there. So three thousand each?
Yep.
For each of the generators? And we just can't find anybody else that wants them?
On a three-phase?
On a three-phase doesn't help our situation at all. Most people aren't running three-phase today. And at the same time, even though they were put to bed properly, you still have the potential that they just don't function.
They just don't work, yeah.
Yeah, they haven't run, we haven't hooked them back up and tried running them, so.
I think we had some trouble with the one in Landville. They had more trouble, they had to do some work on it, too.
It's not.
Even though it was put to bed correctly.
Yep, so.
Did they entertain anything in the laundry?
Not yet, we'll actually probably, EMSCO is actually searching out a salvage contract for the laundry facility right now as we speak.
Because I'm pretty sure a lot of stuff in there, anybody around here can use.
No, and that's the issue. They even said to, I mean, you're talking about a fairly large organization that would need some of that equipment. It's not really anything we could deal with within county. Maybe some of the small washers.
Right.
But as far as the major equipment goes, there's no way we could find anybody around here, probably not even in Iowa that could utilize that equipment.
So, do we still have it on the table, Chris? That's an option that they're going to look at?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, good, very good. And Jake, from an accounting standpoint, if we accept this bid, is this general fund money?
Yes, sir, I believe so. Chris will, when the payment is made to the county, Chris will bring it to the treasurer's office and they'll receipt it in. Michaela and I haven't talked about that particular transaction yet. I'm assuming a general fund, because the general fund has been taking care of everything to date on all the expenses as you guys prepared for the, with the studies and the different things like that. So, first blush would be yes, just general fund. Because I think there is some room in the bonds that the county is selling to cover some of those original expenses either, but I think not enough. So I think that yes, general fund.
Okay.
Short-term, long answer, yes.
No, I appreciate it. And it does, you know, at a minimum, we get some value out of that material that we probably wouldn't have gotten otherwise and cover some of those costs.
Correct.
That we incurred at the outset, whether it's the fence or the confluence costs or anything like that.
Right, all of that came out of the general fund.
Yeah, very good. Board, any other questions or discussion?
No, I'm in favor of recouping anything we can to offset some of the initial costs.
And thank you, Chris, and Confluence for thinking of the possibility of this. I mean, you know, whether when we kept this separate, that there could be opportunity for the taxpayer to receive, you know, recoup some of this money back. So appreciate that.
Thank you. Well, with that, and if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion on this bid proposal.
Motion to approve EMSCO and is it Vite?
Vite.
Vite, a salvage bids.
Second?
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Chris, thank you. Next, we have a VA campus demolition project update. Guess I'm starting to get it again.
So, as everybody knows, Vite has been on-site for June first. So they've progressed really well on abatement, hazardous material removal. So currently, probably at the end of this week, Buildings eighty-two and eighty-four will be ready for demolition. I think they want to get at least one more large building ahead. So I'm guessing second week of July in conversation with Vite yesterday out at the campus, we'll probably see eighty-two and eighty-four starting to come down. So everything on the south side of the road's been abated. We're good there, so officers' quarters, that's all taken care of. They're pretty much working their way into the interior of the campus right now. But, yeah, that northwest part of the main campus, we'll start seeing eighty-two and eighty-four coming down probably second week of July.
Okay, great. Timeline, Chris, we're still on, pretty much on schedule?
As long as we can keep everything hauled away, which I am completely confident we will. Vite's still telling me they estimate will be ending early.
Okay, wow, very good. Thank you. Yeah, Board, any questions for Chris on the update?
No, thanks for all the work on that, Chris. I know it's been a headache.
It's been great. Massive project, so Chris, thank you. Thank you for keeping it moving forward. Very good. With that, we would entertain a motion to close discussion on this item.
Motion to close discussion on VA demolition.
Second?
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
We have a two-part, five A and five B, which is a, we need to make a motion to bring back from tabling at our last meeting. It was Agenda Item Number Three, a new Class C liquor license for outdoor service from countryside winning and events. And we had, I think it was a septic issue. Bridget, where are we at with that?
As of nine oh-six this morning, we haven't heard any more from Mr. Lambert. Last night we did one inspection, there's one more inspection to be done today. So as of nine oh-six, he has not finished it today, but I'm anticipating it should be done by the end of the day.
Okay, good. Well, let's do this first, let's bring this back from table, so I need a motion to do, let's do that first, do, we just got to do that for Jake's record-keeping.
I need to make motion that remove from tabling?
Yes, bring back from the table. Reset the table.
Second?
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Very good, this one, your question.
Bridget, wasn't he having some material issues that he couldn't get?
There were some issues that he couldn't get, some PVC piping, but I think that's rectified now. One of the suppliers is actually coming to install a pump today, this morning, and he should have the rest of the system done by this morning, so.
Okay, I assumed that was probably going to be an issue along issue of license if he couldn't get any material yet, so.
Yeah, and that's a system-wide thing right now anyways, so.
Good.
So since we brought this back from the table, which is really five A, five B is do we want to take action?
Correct.
On that item for either approval, re-tabling, whatever. Bridget, give me your recommendation.
I believe as long as he is completed today, I would be fine with him getting his liquor license, but it would need to be completed by today, so.
Okay, and do you have assurances that that will be done?
I'm going to say ninety-nine point nine percent I'm sure it'll get done today, so.
Jake, from a motion standpoint, can we make an approval pending confirmation of Bridget's assurances?
I think.
That would be a very unusual motion.
Yes. Bridget would probably appreciate that a lot. I believe that you could pass it subject to, kind of winging it here, I don't know if Ed's online or not.
Is Ed on the line?
And then she can confirm with me later before I click the button on the alcoholic beverages website.
The way I look at it, to me, we really didn't do it until we actually had a complete system.
Yeah, if we can't do, if we can't do it subject to getting this done, in other words, the motion or approval would not be effective if it didn't get done by the end of the day today. So if we don't, that would be the only way we could do this, other than what Steve is suggesting, which is it's either an all-or-nothing deal. You either have it or you don't. So, apparently it is not on.
I would, I'm not sure. And the subject to would be, seems to me as if you make a motion subject to something happening and that doesn't happen, then the motion isn't valid anymore.
It's not, it's not.
It's not an action. That would be.
I don't know, I would play by the rules.
Setting precedence is also something that, you know, we could be, we'd be looking at that, Jake.
In what way?
Yeah, if we had another one of these, you know, and saying, well, but I'll be done, you know.
Yeah, I know, we're just setting ourselves up.
Yeah, I don't think so.
And we've done motions like this before, where we've had activity that needed to be complete. It's a way to not make people wait for two weeks.
What do you think, Bridget, are you comfortable with that idea?
Or is there something that, you know, if we were to?
What we don't want is somebody to see a subject to action and ignore you.
Right, right.
And say, I've got my approval. And I'm not saying they would, but that's always the risk we take.
From a professional standpoint, I feel like he's going to be done today because I know what is left to be done, and he's the very last step, and that can be completed today, so.
So the date, all the things you need to do for this are in process?
Yeah, we're actually just waiting for a phone call from Kurt to go out there and do the final inspection, so.
And the product was sitting there? Did you see, I mean, you were, when you're out there?
No, but I have notification from Kurt that he had it and the supplier was coming this morning to set up the pump, so.
So they've already gone to the expense of getting it out there?
And my field assistant was out there last night and he had everything in place, so.
Well, I have, based on that, I talked to Jason, he has no issues. So, I have no issues doing a subject to, guys, I don't, they've already gone to the expense of getting that far down the process. This isn't like fair ground, and.
So you're telling me, Jake, if we approve this and whatever needs to take place, doesn't take place, then our action will be nullified?
I think the motion, again, craft your motion to say you're approving it subject to the completion certified by the Environmental Health Department.
I see, my department has nothing to do with the liquor side of it. We're just, if we're going to have that many people, we want to make sure we have facilities. So I honestly don't care about the liquor side of it. It's more if we're going to have, you know, some one hundred people.
We can't issue, we can't approve a liquor license on a non-compliant site.
Right, right.
The motion would be that we approve the Class C liquor license subject to final approval of the septic tank from Environmental Health.
I'm comfortable with that.
Is it subject for today or is it subject for just?
Subject to final approval. So if Bridget happens to get to it tomorrow at nine?
I mean, close the business for us is four-thirty today, so.
I.
I think it is subject to approval if uncovered.
Yeah, I would think so. If she doesn't approve it, then it doesn't happen, then you don't get your license, so. Is there a motion? Based on what I just said? Or feel free to craft your own.
I'd feel more comfortable if it was subject to today.
Keisha wants a sunset clause.
Was that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second. So, to read back the motion, just to make sure that if I understand right, it's approve the Class C liquor license subject to final approval of Environmental Health by four-thirty, June twenty-two.
Close the business today.
Close the business.
I guess if it doesn't happen, we'll just have to bring it up again later.
So Bridget, you got to be on-call, take them out and say they're ready to go. All right.
I will be there.
Jake, on-call.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Unenthusiastic, aye.
She's not very enthusiastic at all.
All right, local option sales tax discussion, jurisdiction sunsets. Jake, I know we've got the letter from the mayor of Melcher Dallas.
Right, okay, so.
Barb, are you here?
Barb is here.
Barb, Barb is here.
Barb is just here.
Barb, Barb is, the mayor of Melcher is here. I actually asked for this discussion item a week or two ago, just as things were progressing, I just wanted to give the board a heads-up while you may be being contacted by a few jurisdictions, which has then since, due to timings of our meeting, has happened. And just give you a little background so you kind of do, I hope it was in appropriate nature to do this discussion, so. In a nutshell, we're working towards the city school board. The November elections this year are city councils and school boards, which mean candidates for positions that are open to fill vacancies and opportunities for those organizations, jurisdictions to do ballot questions. Law has changed as well that the county, the county actually can do ballot questions as well this fall because everyone in the county is going to have an opportunity to vote. So the jurisdictions, the way we set up countywide initiatives can be on the ballot as well, if needed. That's just some background there. Improving for that along the way, and we send out notices to the cities and the schools, worksheets we call them, you know, who do you have, what positions aren't going to be on the ballot, you know, filing parades, just things like that. In those conversations or how it's kind of, it was kind of reminded of people, and I think Melcher Dallas was on top of it, and I think the city of Bussie was as well, of their impending sunset of the local option sales tax on December thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-one. So these are city issues, those two cities. I guess did a ten-year. Last time we had local option sales tax, as you can see, was in two thousand and eleven. And the cities of those two individual towns had sunsets of ten years, and I believe Pella and the city of Knoxville and the Board of Supervisors at the time worked together and kind of aligned, aligned so everybody would come out in two thousand and twenty-three. And I think some of us, that was eleven years or something like that, from when we had the election. Reasons to have elections ahead are, let me backtrack for a second without trying to overwhelm. When there's a sunset on a local option sales tax, it ends. And then for it to restart, you know, you think, oh, we're just continuing, we've had it for twenty years. But it's an effective sunset ends and you're now imposing local option sales tax again. So the key word in this is imposition of local option sales tax. Very strange law, without getting too deep into that and without, if we ever need to go further with legal counsel or something, but the imposition of local option sales tax has a, has a rather old rule when it comes to election, that a jurisdiction cannot just call for that themselves unless you represent over fifty percent of the population in your county. So to impose a local option sales tax, individual jurisdictions, any of these ten, it'd be the nine incorporated towns and then the Board of Supervisors representing the twelve townships, has to have at least fifty percent representation of the population. So, Bussie and Melcher Dallas can't just hand the auditor's office, actually technically the Board of Supervisors has to call it, but the auditor's office is filing agent, a resolution saying, we would like you to put this on the ballot this fall. They need assistance. They need to get resolutions of support of the jurisdiction, either calling for election or supporting, again, to equal over fifty percent. So that can take like the city of Knoxville and the city of Pella combined equal over fifty percent, or the Board of Supervisors representing twelve townships in the city of Knoxville, or a combination of basically the big three and then anybody else that comes along. So you can see here that some of the jurisdictions in two thousand and eleven passed the local option sales tax without a sunset. That's most common around the state right now, very popular, that people aren't sunsetting local option sales taxes anymore. They can be rescinded by motion of the board at any point, but it kind of stops the whole having to come back for the imposition. They can also.
Is that the way the ballot is worded?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's the way the ballots were. And also, on local option sales tax, if there's no sunset, if there is going to be a use change for what was on the ballot, they can bring that to their, to the vote of their jurisdiction without all the help. The fifty percent rule is only for imposition of, so that's representing or done because of these sunsets. Okay? The other things to remember, and this is all just kind of background information as you guys have discussions moving forward with these jurisdictions or with however you want to do it, is local option sales tax can only be imposed twice a year, January one, July one. So it has to be passed ninety days before that. And if an election fails, it can't come back onto a ballot within six months. So that's why some, you know, you kind of look ahead a little bit sometimes as to what's happening. So, yeah, as you can see, the townships aren't on until two thousand and twenty-three. I believe Bussie, I believe you're going to be getting a letter of support from Bussie as well. Any of these jurisdictions can pass motions of support to have any of the individuals that need it to go to ballot at any point can do a motion of support. That does not mean that they have to put it to election at that point. So like Knoxville and Pella, the board can pass a motion, pass a resolution of supporting any of the jurisdictions that need it, does not require you to put it on a ballot at that next election. You can, you don't have to. So if Barb wants to speak, she can.
Clarification, Jake?
Yep.
Is the normal, the normal life of this, ten years or no sunset clause, is that too often you have?
No, you can do anything you want.
Anything you want.
It just has to be, whatever you put on your ballot.
Okay.
Local option sales tax kind of started back in the day and has, you know, become more popular. There's also one for the schools that is a statewide thing, does not have a sunset. As jurisdictions have progressed over the years, sunsets, so if you look on Department of Revenue website and look at sunsets for all the jurisdictions around the state, large, large majority no longer have sunsets with backing that a motion can, you can repeal it or change use by, by an election as well.
So do we have the capability of saying whether there's a sunset or not?
You as a board has a decision if there's a sunset for your, what you're representing the twelve townships. If, if, when, if you bring it back to election.
So.
You only, you only have that option.
Yeah.
To cover the townships, you don't have that option to cover any of the cities.
They may have their own mind whether, okay.
It's difficult for people if there's pockets.
Right.
Of knowing who and what is.
But it would play into the negotiation of support.
Yes, sir.
That's where it comes into play.
Yes, sir.
So if a town did not have a sunset, pick a town, and the board supervisors did, but you needed the board supervisor's support because of the population, uh, calculation, that would be a point of negotiation in that discussion.
It would, or it could.
Right.
Yep. I believe, I believe last night, at least according to the agenda and then according to KNI news this morning, Knoxville, Knoxville actually had, um, two agenda items. One was, uh, to support, what's it, Melcher's? Melcher's, um, request, cause Melcher requested, um, I don't know if they've requested all jurisdictions or not. I don't know if Bussie has made those requests yet, but I believe the city of Knoxville last night passed a resolution supporting, um, putting Melcher Dallas on the ballot and also passed a resolution on, only going by what I, I didn't actually listen to the meeting, but for the city of, they did, for the city of Knoxville, putting the, the local option sales tax, um, question to their citizens this fall as well. So there.
So it's best that we, we do it all at once together?
That's a, that's a decision that you guys would have to make. Your options, um, are, are that, um, this fall, there is an election happening for cities that if you put a ballot question on, you don't have to pay for a special. There are only certain times in a year that jurisdictions can call specials. The next option for that in twenty two is March. Um, again, if, if that's something that the board would wanna do or, or in conjunction with someone else, you would still have to, because it's an imposition of, because of the sunset date, um, you still have to get fifty percent representation. So the board can't do it on their own. The board would have to have assistance from someone. Um, all right? So that's.
Barb, would you like to speak to your desire for a local option?
I believe we've sent out letters to all of the other cities asking for their support, and, um, it's just something that, that, you know, we use our local option sales tax to support even areas in the county, like with our fire department and our EMS. So, you know, we would appreciate any kind of support because with that money being gone, the services won't be there.
Right. All right. Are you gonna do, are you doing a sunset or are you doing open-ended?
I'm sorry, Barb.
Are you proposing a sunset or are you doing it open-ended?
Hopefully, we're gonna do it open-ended.
Okay, going for that, go for no sunset.
So, yeah, because it's, it's, you know, it was a surprise to us that, that we had to go through this process.
Okay.
You know, and then, and finding this out, you know, we found out that Bussie was involved in, like you said, Knoxville, holding twenty twenty three, so.
Right. Okay, very good. Thank you, Barb. Thank you. Very good.
Based on the ballot, current ballot language for the county's local option sales tax, I would argue that this fall may be a good time to look at having the county's local option sales tax on the ballot if you choose to go that direction, rather than, what'd you say, s- March of twenty two?
That would be the next time.
Because it, those county conservation, secondary roads, those that are eligible to use a local option sales tax based on ballot language, would plan, our budgets for FY twenty three, when it would expire, would already be turned in by March and, and likely approved. So just for planning purposes, I guess that, that would be my, uh, support to do it sooner than later.
Provide you a little more certainty, uh, on cash flow.
One, one other change that, that is allowed now, I believe, um, is that countywide initiatives can be placed on the general election. So I believe another opportunity would be fall of twenty twenty two, which would be the governor, I mean, it's a big election, the governor's race, big ballot, but I believe that there, there's re, been recent change in legislation that allows a county question to be included in a general election ballot, and that did not used to be the case.
Which would save us money for not having a special election.
It would. It is also, um, again, just from a timing standpoint, if you wouldn't have, again, I'm, I'm not advocating for when you do it, but if you don't, if you, if that's the first time you try and it fails in November of twenty two, you don't collect any local option sales tax then, uh, beginning January one of twenty three. So those are just things to consider as you move forward.
What, from the election process, Jake, what gives the most visibility to our residents and from an election standpoint?
Well, from a turnout standpoint, the, the highest turnout is always a general election. Presidential would be number one, and then the off year, the governor, governor election usually has a US senator on it. Those are always the highest turnouts. Um, historically, city elec, well, historically, special elections would probably be the lowest, especially for, um, something like that. Um, but things have changed now with election legislations and different things. So having school and city elections together, our turnout was a lot higher, um, because it's candidates, you may have a school district that may not have, you know, may not have any races, but the city does or things like that. So turnout was quite a bit higher for the city school election last.
So, so if it is on the ballot this fall, as, uh, some people suggest, or as Barb would like to see, are we confident that a maximum number of people will have an opportunity to, to vote as opposed to the general elections, which obviously are much higher or tend to be much higher turnout?
Yeah. Well, I'm confident that everybody would have the opportunity because we would have the ballot available for every voter in the county. If they ch- choose to pay attention or participate, that's, that's always the thing. A lot of people think the only election ever happens is a presidential election.
Yep.
So.
I just get a little nervous about anything taxation wise.
Right.
When you do off-year elections, because just like school board elections or bond issues.
Right.
Two thousand people show up to vote out of an electorate of, you know, five X that. Now that, that's a problem.
Yeah. Uh, with local option, with the imposition of local option, we have special requirements, and that is part of why, um, some of the filing timeline, I think there's a filing timeline of August ten to get, um, your question, to get a question for a local option on the ballot in November. We have, uh, the auditor's office, if they receive the fifty percent or more, um, would bring to you to call for the election, and then we have special publication notices. There's like a ninety day out publication that's special. There's quite a few special steps for the imposition of local option sales tax that, that we have to do, um, at least in the legal notices of the paper and those types of things.
So what's our timeline, Jake, if we wanted to do it this fall? Is there, what's, what are the steps? We have our discussion today. It's on our radar screen.
Right. I believe the filing deadline for anybody, uh, either, um, a motion to support, um, a request from another jurisdiction or your own would be by n- no later than August ten. Is the window.
Very good. Thank you. Board, are there any, any discussion and further questions on this process? We haven't done this.
It's been a while.
It's been a while. So I wanna make sure we get it right. Your questions answered. Questions for Barb and folks in Melcher Dallas or anybody else?
You know, thinking about this, um, you know, I think it is great, uh, we need to have the discussion, um, but I also think that maybe if we put it in, you know, if we wanna discuss it for a motion, you know, and then maybe it's coming, you know, a couple meetings, that would be fun, too, like, fun with that, versus, you know, making sure people have notice and just being transparent.
I, I asked, just kinda wanted to give you the background information if you would start receiving requests, which has, that, that's kinda why I wanted to just have it up, have it for you to, um, make it available to you. There are, you know, the city of Knoxville, um, I guess they did just pass theirs that was fine. The city of Pella, I'm not sure exactly what their plans are.
We had, we had received a formal request from Knoxville that happened.
Um, no, I, I don't, n- nothing else has come to me. City of Melcher is the only one.
Okay.
But I believe that they, they passed their own already.
So I guess the first question that I'll raise to the board, is there a desire to, uh, support the Melcher request?
Yes, I, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, I support that.
Yep. And that, that can be something that, uh, um, we have some examples of resolutions. Um, Wright County went through this recently, uh, this spring. Uh, actually, I, I believe that, uh, there's, there's samples of resolutions that we can supply to you guys if you would wanna put something on a future agenda, um, for that consideration.
Why don't we do that, Jake, so that we can have a, a full discussion of this, and Barb, you're hearing from the board that there's a desire to consider.
In the letter that we sent to the board, there was an example of the resolution.
Yeah, I saw it. I just, I gotta have him give me a, a formal one, um, to, uh, put on the agenda.
Yeah.
So Jake, we can schedule this for, you guys wanna talk Melcher next board meeting? Steve?
Sure.
Okay. Would you do that with a, with a resolution and ready to discuss that and I, and be thinking more broadly, um, about this before this August tenth deadline?
You, you, Jake, you said like fifty percent, has to be a fifty percent approval rate?
Yeah, it's really, it's really confusing. Uh, okay, sorry, Steve, I didn't, I jumped to conclusion there. To pass the local option sales tax, it does take just fifty percent of the voters in the jurisdiction that's called for it. If that, was that your question? It is not a sixty percent.
Fifty percent of the people that voted or fifty percent eligible voted? That's my question.
Um, for.
If you don't give fifty percent of it.
So on a ballot, it's fifty percent of the people that voted.
That voted, okay.
Passes.
So a hundred people show up and fifty one vote.
Which was what you were alluding to.
Yes.
Right. Not, not to be confused on how you get the question on the ballot, which is support from jurisdictions equalling fifty percent of the population, and where you still have to use the two thousand ten census because that's the last official census.
That answered my question.
Very good. Thank you. Good questions, Steve. Any other discussion, board, on this item? Steve?
No.
All right, very good. Barb, thank you for bringing this.
Yep.
And we will have a resolution and a discussion in our next board meeting on the Melcher request for support. Okay, so that, but entertain a motion to close discussion on this item.
Motion to close discussion.
Sure.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
All right, next we have appointment, appointments to the commission of veterans affairs.
Aye.
Very good. Yes, uh, I'll just take one at a time. Uh, working with Jake, I had submitted, uh, information to the board on, uh, bringing on Kurt Froyan to replace the passing of Don Zoot. And then Jake and I got to talking after I set that up, and we thought it'd be best to just to have him come on and fill what was left of Don's appointment. So that's why that change took place, and so we're requesting that Kurt be brought on to fill that particular timeframe. And that also brought our normal three-year reappointment timeframe up for Al, who agreed to run again and be reappointed. So we submitted that paperwork. And so then we'll be back on our track of reappointing one commissioner every year instead of two at one time. So, very good. Thank you. Uh, Steve, Pusheen, any questions tonight?
No.
Thank you, Mike.
And we're great to have Kurt join us. He's got a good background and gives me a Navy guy, too. Not that I need a Navy guy, but.
Yeah, Mr. Fran will be a good asset.
Yes, he is.
All right, very good. Is there, uh, we can just take this, uh, and bank, uh, both of these. So is there a motion to approve the reappointment of Al Van Zee and, uh, Mr. Froyan to fulfill the, uh, or complete the term, uh, for six thirty twenty two?
Absolutely. Second. Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Next, we have, uh, Pella drop site driver's license lease agreement. Michaela?
This is me. So, uh, this is the same contract we've had with the city of Pella to occupy room two hundred in a community center, um, every Wednesday to offer driver's license services, um, in that community. I.
I, I, it doesn't mean your time's up, Michaela.
I felt like I was being bombed. I wasn't.
Hey, last meeting it was snakes, now it's bells.
Yeah.
Next, next meeting will be UFOs. So we're just trying to ratchet it a little bit. Little bit of entertainment, so, please.
So, I, you know, I think that, um, this agreement continues to be an excellent example of how the city and county can work together to provide services to our residents in the best way possible.
Okay, very good. Cost?
There is no, well, a dollar per year.
Dollar per year.
Is what the city of Pella charges us.
Yep. So we have very good arrangement with Pella. They love the service.
Absolutely.
How many, how many people do you get there, Michaela, on average service day? Or however you, however you divide it up?
We typically, right now, we only have one workstation, um, and, you know, you and I have had this discussion in the past because the DOT has taken me from originally, we had, uh, three workstations down to one.
Right.
So right now, we're probably serving about thirty to thirty-five people per day, um, with the appointment system. However, we, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback on the appointment system over there because people can go to their appointment, get in, get out. There's no longer this waiting in line for an hour, hour and a half. Um, the other part of that is that we now keep the Knoxville station open on Wednesdays. Uh, we did not previously do that. We closed down the Knoxville station and only serve people at the Pella station. The advantage of that is that we have Pella people going to the Pella station now, and the Knoxville people and the other outer line areas that are closer to the Knoxville station now come to be served at the Knoxville station.
Okay, so as far as workflow, you, your folks are able to handle it because you, of the appointment system that makes it more predictable?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think, I think our rental fee is a result of the disposition of the memorial, we, isn't that?
Correct.
Yes.
That, and we had to go the day before and spend almost half a day setting up all of that equipment, running all of those wires, getting all of those workstations, screens, et cetera, um, all ready to go. And then we had to quit early so that we could tear it all down.
Right.
So.
Well, and.
We don't have to do that anymore. That was a lot of work and a lot of stress for my staff.
So we, we appreciate the community center's cooperation in this, city of Pella, and then Michaela for what your staff does in providing the service. And, you know, when the DOT took you down, and we didn't have COVID, and we did, we hadn't thought about appointment systems, and, and that's a state issue. That's not anything that came out of Michaela's office, and then she had to deal with that one station. But now with the appointment system, uh, it seems to be working pretty well.
Correct. And I've not remained quiet about the one workstation. I was still optimistic that at some point we may get another workstation reinstated.
Very good, very good. Thank you. Appreciate the update on that. Uh, board, any other questions for Michaela on this?
No, thank you, Michaela.
Thank you for doing.
Very good. With that, I would entertain a motion on the lease agreement for twenty twenty one, twenty two.
I move we renew the lease agreement between Marion County Trader's Office and City of Pella for the use of room two hundred.
A second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Michaela, thank you. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty five, tax credit application. Jake?
So, um, I'll front the next four.
We got a lot of them here.
Yeah. So again, this is, um, similar to, uh, what we did in a previous meeting with the homestead credits, the business property tax credits, and, um, drawn a blank, a family farm, I believe, family farm credits. So in essence, um, we're doing a catch-up for current year. Um, twenty twenty got us a little bit on, got us out of whack a little bit, uh, from behind on those. So each year, it's a combination work effort again between the, um, county assessor's office, our office and the treasurer's office. The assessor's office, um, takes the applications, make recommendations, does the research and the work, um, if they're eligible or not. My office is the one that then would bring it forth to you and, um, and apply to any tax statements that, that is applicable to, and then the treasurer's office, um, collects the taxes and then also submits for reimbursement from this date. So it's a, there's always three years, cause each of our offices in different years, um, uh, collection of such. So this is, um, the applications that were for current year and then for, uh, the next upcoming year as well. Um, it's for the DVHs and also for the military.
Very good.
And I guess Mike, Mike is actually involved in military. There's been so much new legislation that he has to be part of the military credit. I just, you're, I saw you, and Mike got, you're wanting.
I don't qualify, so I don't know what you're talking about.
Mike, Mike's part of the process on the military now, too. It has to be confirmed.
I just send them up to get the credit. I, you know.
Yeah, that's good.
And keep, uh, what we can off the major lines so people can look their name up. But other than that, we're good.
All right.
It's all good.
Very good. Is there a discussion on this item?
No.
With that, I would entertain a motion approving this resolution.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty five.
Second.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Next, we have twenty twenty one dash thirty six, which is application.
Correct. So this would be.
Same credit?
Yep, same cred, disabled veteran, uh, same credit. This would be for the tax year collection of the twenty one, twenty two. So we're back on schedule now.
Yes.
Okay.
Discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Move we approve resolution of twenty twenty one dash thirty six.
A second.
Motion for Jake?
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Next, twenty twenty one dash forty, which is military tax exemption applications for FY twenty one.
So same, same, um, same process, um, different. This is a exemption, so it removes a little bit of the taxable value off the, the valuation of your home before the taxes are created.
Sure, very good. Discussion? All right, is there? All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Jonner?
Aye.
And twenty twenty-one dash thirty-eight are the applications for FY twenty-two, same, same exemption.
More confused. We have a resolution, it's thirty-eight, we don't have on the, on the agenda, we have forty-one.
Do I do a typo?
Is there a typo there?
I'm sorry.
Which is it? Is it forty-one or thirty-eight?
Let's look here. I believe it's probably going to be forty-one, so that's my mistake on the typo.
So let's make a motion to amend item number twelve to Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-one.
Second.
Good catch, Stephen.
Good catch. Summer ball.
All right, so McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Jonner?
Aye.
Very good. Now is there a motion on amended item number twelve to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-one?
Move we approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-one.
Second.
Raimi?
Aye.
Jonner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Good catch, Steve. Next, we have a discussion of Hunter's Ridge subdivision, flat five, which is a preliminary plat. Missy, is this yours?
This is mine. So this is the final piece of Hunter's Ridge. Originally started nineteen eighty-nine with flat one. Plats two and three were in two thousand and one and flat four was in two thousand and four. This is eight point six five acres at seventeen lots. It does have a road that is proposed to be continuance of one hundred and eighty-third. And there's been a request made and you have a letter from Tyler for that to be a county road as well. Yeah, the unique thing about Hunter's Ridge is it's been developed under technically four different subdivision ordinances, including the city of Pella. So there, we had to do some adjusting. There was a request made and granted by the zoning commission for a waiver of the streetlights. Because none of the rest of Hunter's Ridge, there wasn't a requirement for streetlights. So that's something that's been added and, and a request was made. And per the ordinance, the zoning commission could waive the requirement of streetlights. Once the preliminary plats through the process, Tyler will all be, will get the construction plans. And once the construction of infrastructure is in place, then the final plat would go back through for approval. And acceptance if the roads are built to standards.
Yeah, I think Missy provided you a copy of the letter I sent to the zoning, or zoning board. Had a couple contingencies in there. You know, this is a preliminary plat, we have not seen construction plans. So pending the plans are in accordance with all of our ordinance and policies for construction of the paved road, I would recommend acceptance into the road system upon successful completion per the plans and specifications for the road.
So this gets another procedural question, Tyler, because you just raised a question I was going to ask, which is, have we ever approved a preliminary plat?
No, to answer your question, no, Tyler and I worked on this. This is how cities typically do it. And honestly, we've not had, we've had more minor subdivisions in the last several years than major. So we have not, the last road to be accepted by Marion County Road Department was Hunter's Ridge. So.
So, so follow-up question. Why wouldn't we do it now? Why wouldn't we wait until Tyler and you and the zoning commission get to a final plat? We've worked out all the bugs.
As specified by the zoning ordinance, we would do it like cities do it where we, you approve the preliminary plat, then the infrastructure goes in place. And, and Tyler's letter also referenced the, in this circumstance and the rest of Hunter's Ridge, just like in cities, the roads are shown as a separate lot. So then, once infrastructure is in place according to the standards, then you adopt the final plat and you're ready for construction. That's how it's specified.
I guess my, my, and I'm fine, I'm fine if we can do it that way and do all the subject twos and all the appropriate language. We just have to make, when you do a construction project of this magnitude and you start going down the road of doing it, and then somebody says, oops, I actually plowed the road this direction, can we just amend it to do that? Because it's hard to say, well, let's go back and change that. So that's why from a county standpoint, we've never done things like this. We've waited for things to actually come into play, so we don't have an oops. And then the boards put on the hook of saying, well, you know, everybody's now making their mea culpa's. And I'm not saying they'll do that, but if we're going to take on a road, Tyler, wouldn't you want it that way?
Yeah, but I think to answer your question, the procedure is, because as Missy stated in the ordinance, it says for a major subdivision, which we haven't had.
So this is a new thing?
Well.
We just haven't had one.
Just haven't had one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Typically, there's a waiver signed for the roads. So we go through the preliminary plat, they sign a waiver that they're not expecting that the county's not taking on the roads. And then we go ahead with the major, with the final plat, so.
So Tyler, reiterate to me again your caveats on, on how we would make the motion. We would approve of the preliminary plat based on these conditions?
So the first contingency would be that we receive construction plans for the road that are consistent with the ordinances and policies of Marion County. And then ultimately, before final acceptance into the secondary road system, we would ensure through inspections, at the time of construction, that those roads are indeed constructed per the plans and specifications.
We can approve the plat, but we don't necessarily have to take on the road.
Right, we're just clarifying our, our intent.
Well, yeah, I just want to make sure we get this right.
Because if we had no intent, developers may choose not to go to the extent of what our ordinance says, which is typical. And the waiver says we're not, we have no intent, we're going to do something much.
I just don't want there to be any ambiguity. Because we're making motions with a list of exceptions. Those have to be, look, lawyer and me come out here, we would like them to be fairly precise, right? So we don't end up somebody saying, but you said this, but it really is this. So just, I just want to make sure we've covered our contingencies.
And the ordinance is very specific.
And we're not going to take it on if these two conditions are not, if this is met, if this happens, we don't take it on.
Yep, the ordinance is very specific. If they're not built to the standards, then they will not become part of the county road system.
Right. Sorry, I'm a lawyer. This is like, I had two people want to put a sunset clause on Bridget's septic tank. We're talking about taking on roads and it's like.
And the letter's not stating you will. It's simply saying, my recommendation in the future to you would be to take it on. I mean, my recommendation doesn't authorize the county to accept them into the secondary road system.
So the preliminary plat doesn't put us in a binding anticipation that we'll approve the final plat if conditions are met. It's really what it would mean to me, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to reread it in my head, how, how the ordinance is specifically worded, if I can have it.
What are the ordinance?
The ordinance.
The ordinance is right here.
Fifty-seven, fifty-six oh seven, right?
Yeah. Public streets shall be completed to grades which are officially indetermined or approved by the county engineer. All public and private streets shall be graded to the full width of the right-of-way. And adjacent side-sloped grades to blend to the natural ground. The maximum grades of all streets shall be designed in accordance with SUDAS.
I mean, I suppose at this point you could state your intent that you had no intention on acceptance, which may change how the project proceeds.
Yeah, and with the twenty-eight E being changed, now going from two mile to one mile, this put all of Hunter's Ridge in the county's jurisdiction.
Correct, so I mean, that's when, when the discussion began and they presented plat five. You have, honestly, for, for Tyler's people to have one hundred and eighty-third to continue through on one hundred and eighty-fourth and no turnaround makes more sense as well as the rest of the roads out there are, are county roads, so.
And as Missy stated at the very beginning, this has been through what, three county, three or four county ordinances in the city of Pella's code. My letter is stating or recommending consistencies with what's been done to date at Hunter's Ridge with as far as the roads and the construction of the roads and how they were plotted.
So fifty-six point one one, the construction completed or provision of bond, so I mean, that's the other. For a final plat of any area shall be approved by the board of supervisors and recorded. Either the construction has to be done or there has to be a bond in place.
So I guess, considering this has gone through multiple boards, including the zoning commission, and the zoning commission was recommending approval by.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
It's been reviewed by.
And we have to have a material reason to reject that. And the material reason to me would be, we don't understand what these caveats are. I think we do generally. The motion would be that we recommend approval of the preliminary plat for Hunter's Ridge conditioned upon acceptance of the county engineer.
Well, I think we have to go through the other, the second, the next step after we have done would be the acceptance of our final plat. And if we don't accept it then.
Correct.
Yeah, but you still got to put that into this because that's what, that's what this says. If we don't put that into the preliminary motion, how are they going to move to the final? So we got to do the preliminary, say this is what we're approving it based on. So when we bring the final, Tyler says they have met all the conditions, right? Am I not understanding this?
That's how I would do it.
Okay.
With the ordinance written.
So that's what the motion would have to contain, that we would, we are approving the preliminary plat subject to the county engineer's approval based on the letter that he has submitted.
Right.
That's, that would be the motion. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make motion to approve Hunter Ridge subdivision, pre- premier, preliminary plat subject to approval.
Conditions laid out in the county attorney's letter, or the county engineer's letter.
There you go. That's my motion.
Almost put it on the hook there.
Second.
Jonner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you for the discussion, appreciate it. I want to make sure we have clarity on our process. All right. Twenty twenty-one dash fifty-seven, expense appropriations. Jake?
Back to me again. So now we're moving ahead a year. So now we're back to FY twenty-two. So the board approved the budget back in March. Final step, we are very, very near the end of fiscal year twenty-one. Eagerly working towards June thirty, right, Michaela? And for us, hopefully, month end, year end, our cash balance rolls all good. And we'll roll in the new budget year, first part of July. Next step in the process, before anybody can use any of the approved budget is for you to appropriate the budget. So standard operating procedure here, assumption was made at a hundred percent. And it can be gone forward from there.
Yep, all right. Board, discussion, questions? Are you willing to approve appropriation of what you budget, approve of the budget?
These are for budgetary departments only and it does match.
And, and I want to make sure we understand this because I think this is where you're going to hear some hesitancy of, or they may not voice it. Budgets are budgets.
Correct.
Number one, appropriations of that budget do not mean a de facto approval of all expenses. That's why we get the consent agenda. So we get an opportunity to review. So I want people to understand, just because it's in the budget and we accept the budget and we appropriate, we're doing it to ease the administrative burden, specifically on this guy, what others to make it easy to say, look, we get it, everybody's doing a good job, we've said it in meetings, manage expenses well, do well. But if we get something that looks like an anomaly, based on discussions we've had, we're going to review it and we're going to come back and say, I don't like it, or change it, or do something about it, or explain it. And if you all get offended by that, that's too bad. That's our job. That's what we're here to do. So don't mistake approval of appropriations or approval of a budget as a tacit approval of every expense in Marion County. That's not how it works, okay? Or would you like to add anything to that?
No, I think that was exactly our own point.
I agree.
There's my rant. First, I gave one, I gave it one immediately. With that, is there a motion on this resolution?
I make motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-six.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Jonner?
Aye.
Very good. We have a discussion item, next, potential action item of a formation of a Marion County Government Committee to decide. It's the American Rescue Plan Working Committee, but it's the COVID relief money. So use the A, the acronym or the colloquial phrase. Keisha, want to talk about this? All right.
So last meeting, I had made the discussion item of coming up with this committee. Think that it'd be important that we look at this as a group. There's quite a few regulations that are on it and I think that it's something that just not the board needs to look at. So I put together a list of names and I'm just going to openly talk about those names as a board and see what, if you guys have any other recommendations. For the committee, my recommendation would be Jeff Anderson, Kim Dorn, Jake, Michaela, Steve Edwards, Tyler, Chris Nestaby, and then one of us. Think it's watching, ISAC recently had a video on it, watch that. Rob Sands was on and give some suggestions, but there still is a lot of gray area. And so this committee would be looking at the task. I would highly recommend that you watch that video if you haven't. It gives you some direction, but it's going to be, I mean, it's, I won't say it's going to be an easy committee. It's something that we have to look at and I know that Michaela has done her due diligence as long as, as with Jake. I'm setting up separate funds and this is on a separate account. But this is something that we have to get, we have to be able to have, look at and then come back with a recommendation to the board, so.
So Keisha, in your vision for this committee, it's to provide the board with a structure to disseminate these funds based on what we understand are the rules under this America, America Rescue Act?
Correct.
I'm, I'm looking at the list, do you need, do you need any legal support to be able to do that?
And, and that would be.
That'd be my only, that'd be my only suggestion, just to help provide some, maybe.
And that wouldn't be a bad idea, yeah.
Somebody from the county attorney's office. Help provide that.
Can you read the list again?
Yeah. So Jeff?
Jeff Anderson.
Kim, Dorn, you, yourself, Jake, Michaela, Steve Edwards, Tyler Christian, Chris Nestaby. And then we'd like, I think it'd be a good recommendation for county attorney staff.
Correct.
And then.
I'm here, Keisha.
Representative. So.
Thank you.
So, and, and, and again, this is merely a suggestion, I suggested this right now from a board standpoint, we would need to discuss it and approve it. Have we received funds yet? Michaela?
Yes.
How much have we received?
3.4 million.
3.2.
3.2.
Is that 50%?
50%.
Yes.
So we've received 3.2 million in funds, that's 50% of the allocation, and the timing on the second half of that allocation?
Unknown.
Unknown, okay. Depends on how fast they can.
I believe that they were supposed to push out the first payment within 60 days, that was really, I'm not sure how they would ever do that, they, they, at, at the end of day 60, they had some sort of a release of their intent or direction or something like that, but I don't know that I've ever heard second round.
And what's, what's, what's the date for the, for the these funds to be used? What's the, what's the final date?
Just.
20.
Well, I think that'd be part of the committee.
I believe it needs to be obligate, there's a difference between used and not to be confused with obligated because of, there's, if it's a major big project, but is it obligated by 26?
I thought it was 26.
Okay, so that, yeah, I, I, I.
Depending on what structure you're doing and what you're doing.
Supervisor Johnner, question?
Yes.
Is there, this Sheriff's panel here, is there, obviously, is one of the biggest budgets, would it be a possibility to have somebody from the sheriff's office on your committee, since we are one of the largest budgets in the county? And then another suggestion would be maybe somebody from IT, just for the back hall side of things, I mean, the cyber aspect of it?
Um, yeah, I mean, other than when you, we think about what's already in there, it's, it's for sewer, water quality, I mean, it's limited. Kim, when, help me, when, those four topics? Do you have that? Cause I didn't write that down.
Yeah, and, and, I don't wanna, I don't wanna repeat Keisha, I, I think just to that point, Jason, I, I guess it's me personally, I, I don't care how many people are on it, or who's on it. I think we want good representation from across county government. And then over time, as you go through this, there will be some people who naturally drop off and say, look, this is, it doesn't impact me that much.
Right.
Anymore.
So I mean, if that's, as long as people under, yeah, are okay with that.
As you go, as you go through the, the legal, just, you know, how it can be dispersed, that may narrow this window to where it's five people that really.
Go ahead, Kim.
Um, the four, the four categories are public health, negative, public health slash, negative economic impacts.
Okay.
B is premium pay, C is revenue loss, and D is investments in water, sewer, broadband.
Great.
So that was only the reason, but yeah, Jason, I mean, if, if you wanna have representation, I'm not opposed.
Did they explain those categories very well?
There, there's lots and lots of fingers that go out for this. It's, there's.
So, I mean, what we're asking.
Infrastructure security, IT security, there is all kinds of stuff like that.
But what we're asking a little bit, folks, out of this group, and, and trust me, I've gone through the presentation, read through the materials, is to come back with a very solid recommendation, because there's also clawback provisions.
Yes.
That they can reach in and say, you did not spend this money correctly, we want it back, or a portion of it back. So we wanna be very careful, I don't wanna be like what some other cities are already doing, and they're just spending it. And they're, they're coming up with some real sketchy ideas for how they can do this. Now, they're predominantly allied cities, so they probably will never get called on. We are not in that position. So, so part of that recommendation, it's gotta be solid, it's gotta be according to the rules as, as have been laid out, to the best of our ability, and we're gonna have to all come to an agreement that that makes sense for the use of this, of these funds. So, okay, is that, as far as the list goes, Jason, I think great if you're on it, and I, I don't care if Andrew, I, that's.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, yeah, I just wanna make sure people understand what, kinda what the, the base is of it, so.
So.
I think you, what you said exactly is right, once we figure, if, if and when it ever gets figured out what these funds can be used for, I think that route's been narrowed down.
So, board?
Thank you.
You bet, you bet, Jason, so who, who among us?
I'm more than happy with you.
Hey Mark, can you hear me?
Ed just jumped on Mark.
Ed. Hey, I'm just curious, is there a baseline of material? Keisha, do you have a packet? I mean, I've, I've taken a look at. Yeah, Kim?
Yep.
Rob's stuff, but I wanna be able to do a review, cause I'm, I also have listened to Mr. Sands' comments, and I have some concerns before we spend a single dollar how we're gonna move forward, so. Absolutely, absolutely, Ed, Kim has a packet she'll send to you. Thank you very much. You bet, thank you. You're more than happy with who being on this?
I was on the last one.
Steve, you okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
All in favor?
Aye.
What?
Oh, for him.
Well, you did, let's hear a more enthusiastic.
I said aye, I'm all in favor of him being on the committee.
So was that a?
I'll make the motion that Mark is on the committee for representation of the board, and, and then that we make this committee out of the, do you want me to list the people again?
Yes.
Okay, so we have Jeff Anderson, Kim Dorn, Jake Grandia, Michaela Bigwood, Steve Edwards, Tyler Christian, Chris Nestaby, Mark Ramey, IT, I'm gonna put Andrew Daman, and then Ed Bolt.
And the sheriff.
And the sheriff. And the, yeah, sorry, Jason.
Sheriff's office.
Yeah, sheriff's office.
Okay.
Sorry, I have somebody from my office, I don't know if it'll be me, but somebody from the office.
Okay.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. Ramey?
Yeah.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
All right, so, since we did that, and since I'm on this committee, I guess I'll assume a, a leadership role in it. Renee, would you propose dates to that group for our first meeting? On the calendar?
I'm assuming it wouldn't be appropriate for one of us, others to send in every once in a while, wouldn't it?
At this point, no.
Probably, let's wait.
They'll come back with recommendations.
That's crazy.
All right, very good, thank you, Keisha, thank you for the suggestion.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, you're welcome, you're quite welcome.
Thank you, everyone.
Wait till we have another committee, all right.
Steve?
Steve's turn.
I'm gonna remember this, oh god.
I don't play well with people.
Uh, let's, until we took action, we don't need to close the session, we take action. Resolution 2021-58, base wage FY22, Tyler?
Yep, each year I bring my base wage policy forward for a couple of reasons, one, just distancing the base wage for when we hire for vacant positions externally, so for example, most common would be our equipment operator two positions, we establish that wage, so if we have retirement or any other attrition, we, we know what it is that we're gonna post that job at, and additionally, if we promote within, we have the the resident, or the policy here differentiating the hourly wage difference for when we promote.
Is, is there a way, Renee, to drop the people off so we can see the numbers? There you go.
And like I said, every year, this does not represent actual wages for individuals within our department, this is the base wage for someone either entering a position for the first time, or for, like, hiring externally.
What's the average increase time?
Three.
Three.
For, for this?
Yes.
For the base wage?
Yeah.
You know, I did the cost of living this year, I don't always do, you know, the recommended 3% as we budget. I, I look at where we're at base wage wise with other counties' base wages, so our salary surveys are what employees are actually paid, so I talked with them about what, what's your entry level position for this, this month.
Okay, so we try to do a little bit of a salary survey and?
Yes, I do each year, when I submit this policy, so this year it was like 1.6% for most positions, similar to the cost, the CPI. Some positions were more like 2%, and then others remained unchanged. So average, I would say, is that 1.6%?
1.6, yes, okay, that's very good. From a competitiveness standpoint, how are we doing?
For this, we're, we're right on what I would call the statewide average for base entry level wages. Now, a future discussion I'd like to have with the board would be the total compensation analysis that Tammy and I have been working on for our employees.
Yeah. Absolutely.
And, and there are some discrepancies there that we can discuss.
Very good, thank you, thank you. I think, and this is just an aside, but compensation as we go down the road, I mean, it's a hot topic nationwide. We're gonna have to really start thinking, and I guess I would encourage all of our department heads to be creative, and to move toward more creativity. Just like Tyler said when he started with CPI, and, you know, you can sit down and have a discussion on whether CPI is a relevant indicator, and you know, you know the issue with CPI, just like I did, we've talked about this. So I know you're aware of it. CPI is probably not as viable a metric as what it used to be. Especially if you look at it from a government perspective, because they edit out things like food and fuel from CPI, so how do you edit those things out and use that number? I assume none of you buy fuel and none of you buy food, right? So, it's, it's a little, it's a, it's hard right now to develop, I guess I'll say it that way, a good metric to know where we're at when you use those kinds of things, do the best you can. But I would encourage our county department heads to really be thinking creatively. It's gonna lead into a discussion we're gonna have, oh, next? All right, so, board, do you have any questions for Tyler on the base salaries, base wages?
I asked, I spoke with Tyler yesterday, and he's had stated, Tyler, that this is something that has been in place for a long time, is this correct?
Yeah, and after we got to find, I thought it probably went back to the day, early 2000s. There was a union in secondary roads for a short timeframe, my guess is that might have been, this may have been a carryover from that, rather than having a union contract in place or agreement, this may have been a way to kinda provide that clarification and transparency when moving forward, I, I thought about that after the fact, so.
Yeah, all right, good question, good question. Steve?
I'm good.
Very good. If there are no other questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion on resolution 2021-58.
Motion we approve resolution 2021-58.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Next item? Bonus, bonus plans. So I'm gonna tee this up, and this is predominant, you know, for the board. Notice this is a discussion item, it says action, we're probably not gonna take any action on this today. But where this came from, over the course of our discussions in board meetings, some of our individual discussions with many of you as department heads and employees, we have tried to figure out, oh, and a lot of discussions with Lisa and HR Council, that she and I have had directly, is how do we get to a place where we can reward high performance within county government? Is there a way to do that? We have two issues, and Tyler kinda touched on it with the salary recommendations for the road department, is how do we keep employees here, so what's our, how do we retain good employees? We're a government agency, we're supported with taxpayer money, we know that. But we also provide services, valuable services, to our residents. And I think overall, we do it pretty cost effectively, when you compare us to other counties. Our overall budget that we just approved increased by just a shade around 2%. Okay, and most of that salary and benefits, our actual operating costs went down. When Jake and, when we went through the whole budgetary process, and that's on an aggregate scale. So I think everybody is doing a good job managing tax dollars. But now we have to get even better. Because again, population growth is, is an issue in Marion County. We know valuations are an issue. And with low interest rates and artificially printing money, that's what's driving costs higher. And then we get pressure as a board from tax policy groups and our own legislators that we should take levy rates down to compensate for the valuation increases, and we haven't touched the levy rate in Marion County, what Jake and, since you've been on board.
General fund levy has remained constant.
Right. So when, when it remains a constant and valuations go up, our taxpayers think we're raising their taxes. When valuations go down, they think we're reducing their taxes. My argument is, no, we haven't changed the rate, rate's the same. Other factors are driving the valuation up and down, and it's not us. Keisha, Steve and I have no impact on valuations, zero, can't do it. That's coming from other outside factors. But that being said, we know that there are impacts to our taxpayers that we have to take into consideration, and we don't know next year, the year after, the year after, the economic circumstances and what those might mean. You already see inflation, you saw what happened with lumber prices, although those are making a little bit of a turn, you see what's happening with gas. These things are real, and they're not going to show any sign of improving as long as people decide that stimulus money is the solution to all of our problems, it just, that's just the way it's gonna be, you can't defeat basic economics, if you print more money than you have goods and services, prices go up, that's just econ 101. And that's what's going on. So, for us, as county government, that's eventually going to bleed into how we pay people, it has to. And are there creative ways that we can still compensate performance, but maybe not keep inflating salary, base salaries? So that's where this comes from, it's also how do we reward people, let's say for last year, in all of our budget hearings, and I don't wanna dominate the discussion here, but this has been on my mind since I've had this, come to, you know, started thinking about this. Last year, all of our residents in Marion County endured an unprecedented event. COVID. Lockdowns. Stay at home. Fear, uncertainty, and in some cases, death. Everyone in here went through it. Everybody to varying degrees. At the same time, we had a major election. We moved our courthouse and moved it back and did a massive remodel of that courthouse where that, that courthouse looks fantastic. And everybody contributed to that, our maintenance department and all of you who participated in that. And we took on the largest demo project probably in the last 50 years in the state of Iowa for the VA. Not to mention the support we provided to Prairie Ridge. So if you think about last year, last year was, and we had snow events, and we had, we had everything last year. So every department did things last year that I would consider to be exceptional. I can make that blanket statement for everybody. We pulled it off in a way that we still serve our residents and serve them in an excellent way. We get, I don't know about you two, I get very few complaints about county services, Tyler gets the brunt of it, cause people don't like how a road is plowed, or maybe they missed something or whatever. Tyler gets the brunt of it because people don't like how a road is plowed, or maybe they missed something or whatever. But I sent him a note saying, can you answer this phone call? And his crew gets on it. And they take care of it. And they, they work to take care of it. So the responsiveness is very high. So how do you reward that? CPI raises. Five hundred dollar bonus that gets taxed at thirty-nine percent? So you get enough to buy a pizza when it's all said and done? That's where this discussion comes from. How do we meaningfully do this so people can, will know that they can still work here? We have to at some point, salaries have got, there's gotta be a cap with certain jobs. You can't just keep raising jobs. It doesn't happen in the private sector. Why would it hap? We're the lowest paid elected officials. And think about everything we took on last year. Makes you wonder why anybody would wanna do it. Must be for health insurance.
Right.
All of that to say, we've gotta think, that's the whole point of this, this, this start of this discussion, is how do we do it? How do we do it meaningfully? I know that many of you from a department perspective are under some tremendous competitive issues in terms of salaries, retaining employees. And it's important that we retain good employees for our, for our residents. It's important.
Good ones.
So, so there's my intro to this. I don't know that we'll get to any place. We just wanted to make sure that we were transparent and that we're thinking about it. Keisha, Steve, I'll let you guys.
I'm hoping this committee can figure that out, that, you know, to go back what you said, Mark, you know, a lot of this, a lot of these cities and even some of the counties are already spending this, uh, free meat money on some really weird things. I think it's gonna come back to haunt them, but, you know, I, I, I'm not, I'm not against the idea of bonuses. It's just how do we pay for them, you know?
And then, and then you look at the structure of current county benefits. So I know that, what, this Friday, Jake, do we do sick leave payout?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay? So when, when you have a structure in county government that really doesn't match the private, because most camp, most private companies don't have that. They have PTO plans. So if we get sick leave payouts, well, is that in essence, or, or comp time, is that in essence the bonus pool? And do we just not do anything else, and we just accept that? Because we can't keep stacking things on top of each other either.
Right.
And we know that merit, anything merit-based sometimes meets with a lot of resistance because people want fairness in government. There's no such thing, but yes, people want.
And you, and you know, when we speak about, um, what we offer, I know that there's also, you know, we sick leave payout, but then, you know, some work thirty-seven and a half hours, some work forty. There's, you know, there's, yeah.
Yeah, there's no consistency there either.
Yeah.
So, so, and it, it's a way for us to, A, be transparent. We're all thinking about it at various times. Steve's brought up ideas. Keisha's brought up ideas. I brought up ideas. Lisa and I have had a lot of conversations with council on how you go about it. This is a complicated process. If we would ever do something like this for county government, this is not an easy deal. Where we can just turn a switch and say, yep, let's do something to reward excellence.
Well, see, that's what I struggle with, you know, and like the way it's worded now, that you give X amount of dollars to all full-time employees. I'm more of a merit-based person. You, you get what you work for, you know? And I, I, although, it's, it's no-brainer that there's some people that do above and beyond more than the other people. But the way it's worded here, we're gonna, we're just gonna reward everybody the same.
Yeah.
You know, I, I struggle with that a little bit, but.
And selfishly, some of it.
I understand.
Selfishly, Steve, some of it's up for us. Because if you give everybody the same reward, then we, we, we don't, we don't get, we don't get a bunch of calls from people saying, I don't like what you did. I mean.
Well, I don't care what they like. I mean.
And let's make it apparent.
It ju- it just gets old.
I, I know, but you shouldn't reward somebody for, you know.
No, absolutely. You're absolutely right.
I, I, that's why I struggle a little bit.
So, go ahead, Keisha.
I wanna make it apparent, though. A county employee bonus is not for electeds.
Yeah, that's.
That's.
That's one of the things, as we, as we've gone through the research, so electeds are exempt.
Yep.
So you would not get, electeds could not get a bonus. Okay, this would be for, this would be for full-time staff.
Yeah.
And there would be even other further restrictions on that because of the legal issues around, around bonuses. There are government entities that do this. So I know it can be done. I think the question that, as we think about it and have this on agenda topics periodically from now on, is also for you as county employees to think about. And I, and I, and I raised it. We have sick leave payouts. We have comp time payouts. We have raises. We have, we have all those things. But as you just heard me say, at some point, the next two or three, you, you gotta be thinking about this as man, especially managers. Is there a point you can't just keep giving raises? A job is worth ass. There's a, there's a top end to them. In the private sector, there's a top end. Otherwise, I think about it from the public official standpoint, wages never go down. The next elected person that fills our seats will not start where we started. They get the benefit of the fact that if Jake ever, ever, Jake's not ever retiring. He's gonna stay auditor for as long as he can.
That's incorrect.
What? What?
Let's bring that to a vote.
But if Ja- but if Jake started, I'll just throw it out at fifty-eight. He's not at fifty-eight now. And the next auditor that comes in may not have a lick of experience. May not be able to do a third of what Jake can do. But he starts not at fifty-eight. He steps at where Jake is now. That's not right either.
No.
These jobs should be measured for experience, and if you're new, you shouldn't get what the old guy had or the old gal to be.
Never worked that way, never worked that way for me.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's, that's a discussion point. I would love at some point to have a group that would talk about this from a county government perspective, especially among our leaders and managers, to see where we're at. And maybe the answer is, nothing changes. That could be the answer. But we're not doing our jobs as stewards of taxpayer money if we don't talk about it. If we just keep going down the road, keep doing things as they are, and not recognizing the stuff that's changing in front of us. We need to do that to be good stewards of taxpayer money. Because they're paying for this, and we need to respect that. So there, that's, that's the whole point of that item. It wasn't intended necessarily to be an extra item. Yes?
Can I add to your, to your, uh?
Is there anything to add?
Yeah, well, just a s- one slight thing.
Absolutely.
It's a good thing.
Absolutely.
I'm like, everybody opinion.
Well, you know, I, we, we talk about work comp a lot, and you, you just talked about how much
Yeah.
we moved in, we moved out, we moved in, all the, the moving parts that happened last year. And our mod rate went down. Um, it's the second best mod rate we've ever had in the last, since two, since, since beginning of time, that I can know, that our best mod rate was point six six, and that was in eighteen nineteen. So for twenty-one, twenty-two, our mod rate is seven, uh, point seven nine percent. We got an eight point two, or eight, point eight two experience bonus. And we went nine hundred and three days without a lost time accident.
That's outstanding.
That.
Outstanding.
We, that, we've never come close to nine hundred and three days. So that.
And see, part of Lisa's, part of, I'm gonna jump in.
That's all right. Take it away.
Part of the discussion that she and I had when we went through the numbers on work comp, when I came on, what, we were spending, what, how mu- what were we spending?
Our highest we've spent, um, two hundred and twenty thousand a year on work comp premium.
And what are we spending now?
Um, estimated for twenty-one, twenty-two is ninety-two thousand.
So did, what, the whole genesis of this discussion, where it came from, is I'd like to find a way, I wanted to treat, see if I could find a way to reward employees for what they've done. Because that is, when you think about that, that's, A, that's phenomenal for the taxpayer because you reduce the risk. Just the premium alone isn't the issue. It's the claims we pay. It's the lost time. It's frankly, if someone has to leave their job, the, the retraining cost, it's more than that. That savings is representative of more than just those raw dollars. So how do you tell people, thank you?
So we can base, I base the bonus on the saving. I mean.
Yeah, I, but I, I think that's part of the discussion, Steve, is how do we do this and are there, and so what I, what I'm looking for is, A, board, to be thinking about this. Uh, because we'll have more discussions, but also.
That's a, that's a little more equitable in my mind because it's not what you produced, it's what you didn't do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it also, we have to think about, you know, those salaries that, you know, there is a top end.
I think it's a total package. I think when you're talking bonuses, you're really talking how we do compensation.
Right. And it's a benefit that someone only worked, you know, a hundred and forty hours, someone worked thirty-seven and a half. That's a benefit.
You bet. We've been pretty creative on benefits. We keep, I think, a top-flight benefit program, but we're not like other public entities. Our, 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 our employees pay for part of their benefits. We don't fund a hundred percent. That's unusual in government. So, and, and that saves the taxpayer money on the one hand, but it still allows for a top-flight benefit program in a, in a, in an area where costs are always, there's always cost pressure to go up, always. And we've kept a lid on those costs pretty well over the years. So.
So the next question that somebody will ask, well, is this a one-time thing, or are you looking at it as a yearly thing, or?
I am open, Steve, to.
I'm just sort of.
I'm open, and that's a great question. I'm open to having a discussion on how do we do compensation for the next ten years in county government. I don't care.
And that's why everybody else has to get involved.
Exactly. Exactly. We can't just, as a board, create an edict for this. I just want you to know that we're open to the concept that we've had discussions on raises before. We've had these things. I know people think different things, and I think we've, I, I think we've been extremely, if there is such a word, fair. I think we've tried to recognize performance. I think we've tried to keep our salaries competitive. I think we've tried to give benefit programs that our employees can be proud of and that are competitive with the private sector. But again, it comes down to taxpayer funds system, and they're under pressure. So if they're under pressure, we have to think about how we do this, because salaries and benefits are our largest line item. They put the most upward pressure on our expenses. Unless Tyler comes in and says, hey, Mark, we're gonna get, you know, a twenty-foot snow event this winter. Right? Or Chris tells me, Mark, we have to rebuild the entire courthouse. Those things would change that, that metric. But those are one-off events, whereas salaries and benefits are every year, every year. So I, I wanna challenge everybody, because it's gonna come up again, and I may form a group, I don't know, where we talk openly about what to do as we look at what our taxpayers are going through as much as what we go through as county government, because you have to factor that in.
It won't have to be an open discussion. If currently, we can't talk to each other, it's not getting involved.
Sorry.
Well, I know, but it just, it just annoys me.
Oh, I know, I know.
I haven't really been getting anything done.
That's part of the problem with government, right? All right. That's all I got. Unless you guys have anything else you wanna add to that. Sorry for the, sorry for the rant, but you know what I'm thinking. So.
I agree. I think that they put on their thinking caps. I think we've been creative. I think we've discussed that in the budget sessions. And I have to, you know, be creative that way, too. Um, and, uh, yeah, if we down the road decide that we wanna form a committee, you have some work, and yeah, I agree. Thank you for letting me bring it up.
All right. Is there a, what's that?
I'll volunteer.
She volunteered.
I thought I heard that. Keep that, don't let me forget that, Steve. Is there a motion to close discussion on this?
Second.
Johnner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi. Updates, Mr. McCombs?
Well, I've been kinda held loose for a week or so, so I, you know, I don't really have anything to report.
I don't have anything at this time.
All right, very good. Um, I have public help, uh, can we have public help tonight?
No. We.
Oh, that's right, we canceled.
Yep, we canceled.
All right. It's on the calendar and, right, we canceled. So, I don't have public help tonight.
You don't have public help tonight.
We're still trying to figure out the impacts of, uh, mental health legislation. So I imagine that, you know, I'll be regrouping with Rachel and folks on that very soon, on what that means. Try to come back with a full report to report here very soon. So all I got. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
All right, very good. We are adjourned. Thank you.